And Board of Supervisors, Clerk, do you please call the roll?
Ms. Baumke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen. Mr. Dutton Heffer.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
Mr. Snellens.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cohen could not attend today's meeting, uh, due to illness in his family, uh, but will be participating in the board meeting via phone. Uh, may I please have a motion and a second for Mr. Cohen to participate in the July 2nd board meeting via phone?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. I think they're gonna tally, oh yeah, there it is. Maybe I didn't vote. It's six to nothing, uh, with, with one absence. Um, so, Mr. County Administrator, I don't think Mr. Cohen's online yet, but if you'd let us know when he comes online.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sad to report the death of one of our employees. Andrew Holt passed away this about two weeks ago. He leaves behind his wife Christine. Will you please stand and observe a moment of silence? Amen. I apologize for my emotions. Andrew's, uh, mother-in-law is next door to me. So anyway. I was gonna introduce our new registrar, Anna Rainey. Unfortunately, she had a death in her family. Uh, it will not be here this afternoon. Uh, she's attending the funeral of her grandmother. At this time, uh, the Budget Office, as you all know, has been recognized with two awards from, by GFOA. They're gonna do it a little bit different this year. Usually they show up, but this year they kinda customized the video for us, so, uh, if the Clerk would please, uh, play the video.
Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Morley, GFOA's Executive Director. It is my honor to announce that Stafford County in Virginia has received its distinguished budget presentation award. The purpose of this award program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare comprehensive and understandable budget documents, to improve transparency and trust in government. To earn the distinguished budget presentation award, Stafford County met demanding program criteria. Such a record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and dedication of your organization's leaders. This is the fifteenth time that Stafford County has won this award. Program reviewers praise several sections of your document, including the strategic plan, short-term factors, the opening message, long-range financial plans, the statistical supplemental section, and the general understanding of the document. Nice job. We hope that this award to Stafford County will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it is my privilege, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present to Stafford County this distinguished budget, budget presentation award. Congratulations.
This time I'd like to ask Andrea Light and her staff to meet me up front. And this is fifteen years?
Uh, no, this is thirty-three. Our records are better than GFOA's.
Well, what happened to that guy? He got it all wrong. Thirty-three years, this is great. And I'll tell you, these guys do such a great job at budget time. For those of you that know me, I'm not a numbers person. Uh, so I rely on these folks to tell me the numbers, and they've always been accurate. And, uh, it's just amazing job they do. So on behalf of all of us, congratulations.
Thank you.
I look forward to thirty-four years. And this one... This one is for certificate, uh, certificate recognizing for budget preparation. Now, we just passed a budget not too long ago. Guess what? They're working on the next budget, so it's a never-ending process, right?
Yeah.
Job security. Congratulations. You wanna say something?
Uh, sure. So really, um, we'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors, providing guidance to us and, and structure to our budget presentations and help with all of our workshops, and of course, county administration. Today, one of our, our staff members who couldn't be here said that she's worked on this and gotten the award twenty years in a row. And we have Renang here, who's here for the first year in a row. We had our old CFO leave from having been here for over ten years, and we have a new CFO today. So there's a lot of change and a lot of positive moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job. Thank you so much. I've often thought about the idea of cutting a little path through here. So when the Chairman needs to get down there, he or she can just step off or step up, but I don't think that idea went over too well. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Uh, there is one addition to the consent. As proposed proclamation R-19-39, recognizing congratulating Jennifer Harada for her excellence in athletics and academics. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to nothing with one absent. Now, we're gonna have presentations by the public. I do have several speaker cards that I will read out. When you come to the podium, I would remind you to state your name and address, unless you are a student. State your name only, do not give your address. You will have three minutes to talk about any subject you'd like. The green light will come on when you state your name and address. Then the yellow light gives you about a minute. And when the red light comes on, we ask that you wrap up your comments. My first speaker card is David Sousa.
Good afternoon. My name is David Sousa, Members of the Board. I understand a bond and, um, something about a county permit are being arranged and debated currently. These will take time, maybe years before the first trucks roll out. So I'd like to suggest a far quicker potential alternative. Title fifteen point two of the Virginia Code specifies powers of local government. Uh, I point to Virginia Code fifteen point two dash nine hundred, abatement or removal of nuisances by localities and recovery of costs. The code specifically states, quote, "Any locality may maintain an action to compel a responsible party to abate, raise, or remove a public nuisance if the nuisance presents an imminent and immediate threat to life or property." That sounds familiar. "Then the locality may abate, raise, or remove such public nuisance," end quote. The code then specifies the term nuisance, including but not limited to, uh, quote, "Any dangerous or unhealthy substance which has been allowed to accumulate in or on any place," end quote. Roadside vegetation by certain intersections in a long sharp terms obstructed visibility, clearly presenting an immediate threat to life and property via car accidents. I concede that the county cannot clear all dangerous roadside vegetation by labeling it a public nuisance, and that may take in addition to the Virginia Code. Yet, I believe that vegetation similar to what was cleared by Abel Lake can be removed legally by emergency action of the county as specified by this part of the code. In certain areas, the roadside vegetation meets all the requirements of a public nuisance, and the county has the legal authority to remove it without filing a request from VDOT or the Commonwealth. Members of the Board, I've copied, uh, the code to which I've referred, and I encourage you to take a look. I will continue to dig through Title fifteen point two for anything else that the county may be able to use in a timely manner. But I recommend the county consider taking emergency action in areas such as intersections on roads known to have a higher accident rate as specified by the county survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sousa. My next speaker card is Margaret Ann Holt.
Thank you. I'm, my name is Margaret Ann Holt. I have lived in the Falmouth District at nine oh six Carol Lane in the Mount Pleasant Estates subdivision near Falmouth Elementary School since nineteen seventy-three. I'm here today to request that the Board change the current county code as pertains to the termination of health insurance coverage following the death of a county employee. The current code reads that health insurance will be terminated on the first day of the month following the death of an employee. This is an unconscionable rule. When a loved one dies, the family's in a state of grief. Sometimes it's all they can do to get up and eat and dress. There are many huge decisions that have to be made. Legal requirements, notifications, funeral, burial, the finances. Grief creates brain fog that makes it very difficult for those who are grieving to be able to think clearly and to make good decisions when given an immediate deadline. It is unmerce, it is an unmerciful law to expect the family to deal with the termination of their family's health insurance in such a short period of time. My son, Andrew Holt, worked for the County of Stafford in the Information Technology Department for twelve years. He became the Information Technology Network Manager. He kept the Verizon lines working so that nine-one, nine-eleven system, the Stafford Sheriff's Department, and the Stafford Administration offices were all reliable. He wore a beeper on his side twenty-four-seven, so if a Verizon line went down at two AM on Sunday morning, he took care of it. He assisted employees with their individual computer challenges and advised the county on IT needs into the future. There were many times he went toe-to-toe with Verizon to see to it that the lines were up and running in a timely fashion. He died at twelve twenty-four AM on June twenty-fourth of a massive, massive heart attack at age forty-three. He had a wife and two children. His family was a one-income family. His wife Christine was notified two days after his death that their family's health insurance would be terminated on Monday, July first. No family should ever have to deal with that kind of crisis following the death of their loved one. I urge the Board of Supervisors to immediately adopt an amendment to the code de, dealing with the termination of health insurance. I suggest the code be changed to ensure that the grieving family would automatically have at least thirty days of continued health insurance coverage. This would give the family a chance to find alternative sources of health insurance. The Cobra coverage that I personally paid for so the family would not be without health insurance cost twelve hundred dollars for one month. This was the only option available in such a short time, but at least the family had some kind of health coverage to tide them through the month of July. Do not allow the current code to continue to negatively impact the grieving families of Stafford County employees who die while they are actively employed by the county. I suggest that the amendment to the code be named the Andrew Holt Amendment. It would be a reminder to the county of the faithful employee who served the county well for twelve years, who protected the county's system when Verizon lines went down, who sprang into action when malware tried to infiltrate the computer systems, and who prevented hackers from loading ransomware onto the county's data systems. It would be an acknowledgement of Andrew Holt's loyal and dedicated service to the county and be a reminder to the county to support surviving families after the death of an employee by assuring the surviving family members would have health insurance coverage for at least another thirty days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holt. I know that was difficult. County Administrator's assured me that he's looking into that policy, and I, I'm, hopefully, we're gonna have some action very quickly. My next speaker card, and if I don't do this name right, please excuse me. Alden... No, I didn't do it right, did I? Terlisi? Am I anywhere close?
Uh, you're okay.
I do apologize. If you hurt worse, I feel better. Remember, if you're a student, please do not give your address.
Hi, my name is Aiden Terlisi. And I will be a senior at Colonial Forge High School. I've been blessed with the opportunity to speak to you about something near and dear to my heart: surveys. Uh, the survey in question is Changing Stafford's Roads New Survey. For clarification purposes, I will address Changing Stafford Roads as CSR, uh, I, as I proceed further. In brief history, as it provides necessary context for our new survey, CSR created a road survey towards the end of May with the express intent to collect and compile a list of roads deemed most dangerous by the community. While our intentions were genuine, our execution was not. It became apparent relatively early in the survey's lifecycle that the survey was abetset with language and structural issues that effectively nullified the one thousand two hundred and twenty-six results our survey received. For this reason, CSR is sorry. We allowed emotion and frustration to interfere with good data gathering. However, as I am beginning to discuss, CSR recognized its impulsiveness and initial ineptitude at statistical data collection and has taken ample measure to prevent similar circumstances with the second survey. We have met with an accountability specialist to review some of the survey's questions and decide on the next best course of action. Through our meetings, we have been able to isolate questions that promoted our audience choosing one choice over another, as was present in our preliminary survey with charged language. Beyond this, we completely removed any trace of subjectivity within the preliminary questions or, that could be cause for communication as, as the, as to the question being asked. We created basic preliminary questions that outline and specify for a particular audience and implemented skip logic and other such features to allow for more efficient data analysis. Our new survey draws a list of roads in combination with VDOT's comprehensive road evaluation, evaluation report, as well as roads that appear on our preliminary survey, but not on VDOT's report. Making this change allows CSR to effectively compare and contrast the two for the community's benefit. Finally, there's been a change of platform. The preliminary survey was based on Google Forms, which allowed for multiple submissions in certain areas. To eliminate this factor, we've chosen to switch to a more reliable platform. Taking a more long-term approach to our survey analysis, we hope to release the survey in mid-July and close it towards the end of August. However, these dates could change based on a number of factors. That's all CSR has to say right now as it pertains to the new survey.
Thank you very much. My next speaker card is Rebecca Chung.
Good afternoon, Members of the Board. My name is Rebecca Chung, and I'm a senior at Colonial Forge High School. Today, I'd like to bring to your attention the growth of Changing Stafford Roads, the organization we all have founded. You may have seen us on WUSA nine this morning, speaking on the upcoming projects we have started, such as the new survey. The story also mentioned the limited communication given to VDOT pertaining certain roads, and we are willing to extend a greater line of communication to them. We are currently planning to meet with representatives, representatives, and delegates that are representing Virginia this month and possibly moving our goals to a state level. We recognize your influence on the local level and the change you have pushed for in Stafford County, and thank you for your willingness to listen to a bunch of non-voting teenage students. We also acknowledge the influence of Changing Stafford's Roads and its benefits to the bond referendum, which is being voted on. Uh, we ask you to keep the citizens' opinions in mind and focusing on the roads mentioned that can be gathered through our survey in VDOT's compiled list. We are also urging for the continuous upkeep of county, county services such as clearing vegetation, covering of potholes, and increase of signage in Stafford County's roads, which would limit the amount of preventable tragedies. While improvements to major roads are needed to keep up with increasing, increasing development in Stafford, we must also recognize the greater usage of our backroads and the safety concerns that they present. The development around specific areas of our backroads are not followed by adequate infrastructure and must be addressed as Stafford County grows. As Stafford County changes, it should also plan, our road should also be planning to fit the needs of its citizens. If the bond referendum does not recognize and reflect the needs of its citizens for future planning, it is not doing its job. We urge you to listen to its citizens, not just the initial process, but as change continues. Thank you so much for listening to us. Have a great day.
Thank you. You do the same. Next and last speaker card is Jeff Adams.
Good afternoon, Jeff Adams, four forty-nine Kellogg Mill Road. Last Wednesday, I was interviewed by Channel nine-two, sitting on the guardrail down there. And as I was interviewed, several students walked across the bridge going to the jumping rock. You didn't see that on TV, but they went. As I sat on that guardrail, two thoughts came to mind. One is ridiculous, but the other one has some merit. Where all that vegetation was just cleared, think of a deck six foot wide, five to six hundred foot long. Gets 'em to the bridge. Put a crosswalk at the bridge, and then you can build outside of the bridge, you can build a six-foot sidewalk to get 'em to the other side. I don't think you can legislate their behavior and keep 'em from going to that rock. The, the lady that interviewed me was a North Stafford High School graduate, and she went to the rock twelve, thirteen years ago as well. Unless you're willing to put a deputy there, the children are gonna go there. So let's make it safe. Now, the other idea's a little bit ridiculous, but I think it's a fun idea. Allow somebody to privatize a concession stand right there at the boat ramp. So paddle boats can be rented. And these boards that they stand up on with the paddles, they could use. But you know, you could put a pontoon boat with a couple of electric motors on there and call it a water taxi, and the children could park in the parking lot, take a boat ride to the jumping rock, and never have to get on that road or get on that bridge. I'm in terror this time of year, coming down that hill from either direction, knowing that somebody's going to be on that bridge. And it's frightening when you've been driving that road for forty years. I know I've seen children on that bridge for thirty-five years. That's why I say I don't think you're gonna change the behavior. But a six-foot board deck to get 'em to where they're going to go anyway, it's gonna cost some money, but it's not gonna cost millions of dollars. It can be done reasonably. And I'll talk to anybody you want me to talk to, to give 'em my ideas, give 'em a brief sketch. I've done things like this before. I can help do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. We did address this issue with VDOT this afternoon, uh, in an earlier meeting. Uh, I'm also told that the sheriff wrote several violations this past week for people crossing the bridge. It is illegal to swim in that lake. It is a very dangerous lake. That rock, uh, when I was growing up, was called Buzzard Rock because turkey buzzards roosted on it. And there was no lake. Uh, but bottom line is, it's a very dangerous lake. We're not gonna do anything to encourage people to swim in it. It is a violation of the wall. And VDOT has agreed to look at the bridge to see what they can do to prevent pedestrian crossings. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else in the chamber on my right that would like to address the Board on any issue? Seeing none, anyone on my left? Yes, please come forward.
Um, hi, my name is Jane Lying. Uh, I have just like three quick proposals to make regarding the roads in Stafford. The first of all, um, putting domed or convex mirrors at intersections on the backroads. Um, this is actually not my idea. This was Aiden's. Um, I think this would provide a semi-permanent solution to the issue of sight issues at intersections. Sorry, I said issues twice. So you put the mirror in front, um, and people would be able to turn out while you guys work to clear the vegetation or mandate that the vegetation needs to stay back. And it would also provide a safety net in case after you clear the vegetation, you still have that mirror. If the vegetation grows back and response time isn't fast enough, people can still see when they make turns. Um, my second proposal was, um, limiting or eliminating large vehicle traffic on the backroads in Stafford. Um, the backroads are narrow. They have really sharp turns and blind spots. If you can eliminate traffics, call, uh, traffic caused by transfer trucks and large commercial vehicles on two-lane roads by stipulating that these larger vehicles can only travel on the backloads, roads if they have private purposes. Sorry, if they have specific business on that road. The backroads shouldn't be used as shortcuts to bypass traffic on major roads. Um, I understand that this rule would be difficult to maintain, so to discourage large vehicles from using these roads as shortcuts, maybe lowering their speed limit. Um, sorry. A large vehicle would have to go ten miles under the speed limit and, um, would only be able to use the roads during certain hours of the day, preferably between the hours of nine AM and two PM. This would be during the school year, so you'd have less student drivers on the road. And lowering the speed limits on the backroads in Stafford, we've mentioned this before, but, um, I haven't seen any further action on, proposed to lower the speed limits on the backroads. So, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. No, you did fine. Anyone else on my left that would like to address the Board?
Hey, where's Waldo? The Treasurer of the Two Assess to Lower Taxes Committee located at Eight Picket Lane. Even though I'm a lifelong learner, I still am a student, and I shouldn't have to give up my address, but since I'm running for public office, I will. If I agreed with the Commissioner of Revenue that's in office now for five terms, we'd both be wrong. I announced at the School Board last week that I will be offering two scholarships, one in academics and one in athletics. I am an alum of the Oklahoma State University, where Ricky Fowler is one of our great ambassadors of golf. T. Boone Pickens is a billionaire's billionaire who has given back and has become one of my great mentors. That we should all be grateful for what we have, and if we have more than we need, then we need to give back. I make it real clear that I want the office. I don't need the office. I don't need to take the salary that's given with that aspect. My job is to take any constituent, and I will show you over the last thirty years, not just the twenty years, mathematically and objectively, you have been assessed in taxes incorrectly. There are many widowers in my generation of the baby boomers who bought property thirty years ago. And thirty years is a magic number because bankers like to give thirty-year mortgages at that time because that's how long it took to depreciate property. Well, now you can get a mortgage between eight and thirty years. And those people who qualified thirty years ago, because of assessments following real estate comps, those are comparisons that are not even real. I own a furnished condominium that sits on twelve hundred and twenty-five square feet, which means it's on the third floor, and I still get charged thirty-two thousand dollars for the land. And the two owners below me get charged thirty-two thousand dollars also, so we're paying ninety-six thousand dollars for twelve hundred and twenty-five square feet. That's not even recorded as acres. Simply amazing how we have no term limits in this Commonwealth, except for the Governor's Office. Thank goodness. Joe, coming up. It's important to vote on Tuesday, November fifth. And remember, school starts before Labor Day. So remember who's on the School Board. If they're an incumbent, they need to be replaced.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the Board? Anyone at all? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Board. Reports by Board Members, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Dutton Heffer.
Briefly, we had our first Legislative Committee meeting this morning. We didn't have enough time to get through all the issues that, uh, that we have to deal with. And now, a lot of things are being held up based on elections that are coming up, and who will carry the county's legislation. A number of those issues are, are very important. They hold over from year to year, so we are working diligently. And, um, again, I'll go back to my previous lecture about the Dillon Rule and the fact that the state legislature controls and holds, uh, most of the power, and we need to ask them permission to do, um, just about everything that's out there, so. We also had an Infrastructure Committee meeting this afternoon that I chair, and VDOT was our guest at that and spent, uh, an hour discussing the issues that are important to many of you and, and the audience today. Some new suggestions have come up and some initiatives that we're, we're trying to work on. And we're looking specifically from that meeting for immediate fixes and require, and, and things that we can do of an immediate basis. So I know trees are important to a number of you, and we're looking at ways that we can, we can deal with trees next to the roads a little more efficiently and, and eliminate many of those. It's a very dear subject. My, uh, my wife was probably watching with, has given me a thumbs up for talking about trees alongside the roads and how dangerous they are. So I, I wanna congratulate and thank you guys for coming out. And as I've said, be the, the conscience of Stafford County that we move forward and, and do the, um, the road improvements that need to be done, the, the wedge projects and the major roads. Take the summer off after today. I think we're gonna, I hopefully think we're gonna pass. I think we're going to, I hopefully think we're going to pass getting that on the ballot. And we're going to need you guys in the fall to help us make sure we get the public to come in and vote for it. So, thanks.
Mrs. Mauer?
Hi, just a couple of items on that I would like to discuss. Number one, I want to thank this board for your help with the Health Department. There is still a house in my district that is in jeopardy of having sewage run across their property because the property next door has a failing septic system. And I want to thank Jason Towery for really kind of heating my urgent calls on Friday. I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done. But because this board took a stand and sent that letter to the Health Department, we are getting some response from the state organization all the way down. And I really appreciate all of your help because we're still having some difficulty in not only responding, you know, sending notices of violation, but ensuring that those notices of violation are followed up on. So thank you for all of that. And also, I wanted to mention, there have been two articles in the Freelance Star lately that have said that Stephanaga Road is not on the list. And Stephanaga is in my district. I think it crosses over into Gary's district a little bit. And it is a very dangerous road. And on the bond referendum, I want to make very clear that there are these major projects which are going to cost a lot of money to fix. Shelton Shop is a big one. We have a lot of accidents. I think we just recently had another accident on Shelton Shop Road. But then there are all of these safety improvements. And in that safety improvements, there's a long list of roads that cover throughout Stafford County in which we're doing some wedge widening. There was a lot of work done in this road study over the last couple of years that not only said, you know, this road is unsafe, but Keith, our former staff member, drilled down to try to ascertain why. And so we are, with this road bond vote that's coming up today, looking at a significant number of roads, not the large, just the large construction projects, although there are a number, but also a significant number of the safety improvements all throughout Stafford County. And so Stephanaga is on the list. And in the suggested road bond language questions, Stephanaga is there. It is an important road, and I just wanted to make that clear. And in addition to the wedge widening and the safety issues with Stephanaga, what isn't highly publicized is that within a year of it being brought to this board's attention, we were able to get smart-scale money also approved for the Stephanaga-Mountain View Road intersection that is traversed daily by hundreds of children. The site distance is incredibly difficult to make that left and the right turn because you've got that hill that you're coming up. And so in a very short period of time, thanks to a significant effort by Mr. Snellings and Mr. Dudenheffer, myself, and with support of the other board members, there are several millions of dollars that are already on not only our CIP, but also within VDOT. So that didn't make the list because it's already approved and moving forward. So I just wanted to make that clear because misinformation is going to kill this road bond effort and want to make sure that correct information is getting out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks.
Ms. Shelton?
Since we're talking about roads, I don't know if you guys noticed, but on July 1st, we finally received a Commonwealth Transportation Board member to represent us at FAMPO. And our new representative will be Cedric Rucker. I'm happy to finally have some representation. I'm not saying that we weren't well represented, but it feels a lot more comfortable to at least have some local person to be able to go and talk to. Moving on, I'd like to talk about broadband. That's all I've been doing for the last two weeks, it feels like. But I'm happy to say that 10 people on Marlboro Point currently have 50 megabytes down and 50 megabytes up, as well as Mr. Cavalier, one person in Whitewater. So that's some improvement. Our roundtable, as I mentioned, well, I didn't mention it, but the roundtable's focused on broadband a lot. And some of our discussions we've been having is to determination on whether to do service districts. Thanks due to some work that was done here at our Legislative Committee as well as with Delegate Thomas. We have that additional tool in our box to be able to provide a service district if you want some kind of telecommunications like broadband, or you could go private pay, or you can go the grant issue. Currently, Stafford County has a grant proposal that's out on the streets for anyone that wants to provide those services. And I believe that closes July 8th, and I please hope that you guys apply to that. Another thing I'd like to do is say I'd like to see my notes. I'm kind of getting used to this new tool, and they just disappeared. And so they just disappeared. I don't know what to say. I have no notes now. So anyway, I want to thank you guys for all the work that you're doing to support the broadband efforts and because we're getting calls from other districts, not just within Stafford County, but other places about how we're doing things. And I had the opportunity to go and meet with some people out at the Rappahannock and learn and meet additional people that we need to be in contact with that are subject matter experts on dredging and activities, environmental activities that we can do on the Rappahannock. I'm hoping this year that we'll hear some more and find some opportunities we can do about our Port of Falmouth. And last but not least, the VRE meeting. I was able to attend the VRE meeting because some of my fellow colleagues couldn't go. And I'm glad to report, I didn't realize we had this much progress going on, but at the Brook VRE, they are 30% completed with the project planning for the new station. I don't know if you knew that, but there's some expansion to the platform, adding in a new platform and a pedestrian bridge. And so that is expected to be complete in 2023. I think that's the first time I reported it because it was the first time I knew about it, but isn't that exciting? And by the way, that's happening at Leland Road as well. And that concludes my comments.
Ms. Baumke?
Yes, so I did neglect to bring up one thing at the meeting with VDOT. I did have a conversation with them regarding the ash trees. And for any of you that are not familiar with ash trees, there is a beetle throughout North America that is eating into the ash trees. And the reason I bring that up is at one of the parks where I walk, at Pratt Park, there are a number of dead ash trees. There is no life on them whatsoever. And when a tree is dead, there are no roots, and it will eventually collapse and fall over. I spoke to VDOT about looking at the right-of-way on River Road because somebody, an arborist, had brought up with me that we have quite a few of the ash trees over on River Road. So that's something that we need to talk to them about as well regarding these ash trees. And it's very obvious that they're dead. So that's a safety issue. And then just wanted to bring up the Fourth of July events that are a combination of the city of Fredericksburg and Stafford County. So you might know there's a fun run, the five-mile run, that starts at 7:45 in downtown Fredericksburg on Thursday. There's the Children's Heritage Day Parade in downtown at 9:30. Then from 10:00 to 4:00, there are all kinds of activities downtown. And then also, we have Ferry Farm in Stafford County. There's a $1 admission for that, but there are all kinds of activities your family can do over at Ferry Farm. And then also, in the evening, we have the regular fireworks over at Pratt Park. You can see them from Old Mill or from Pratt Park. So, and I believe those start at 9:00. But there are other activities over at Pratt Park and Old Mill as well. So enjoy the Fourth of July and be safe.
Mr. Cavalier?
Thank you, Julia. Some items of interest that I attended. Whitewater State Park, there was a big Indian exhibit that the Potomac tribe had put on out there a couple Saturdays ago. And one of the features was the building of a longhouse, and that will be a permanent exhibit there at the state park. So if you get a chance, it's under construction right now, but it's very impressive and all built by hand and from the natural trees right there on site. Also, participated in another Eagle Scout ceremony, this one for John Signan, Troop 840 at the Carl Lewis Center on Telegraph Road. And helped open the second addition to the Affordable Suites Hotel. They've about doubled in size now. And also went to the Aquatic Harbor Marina Fest and the Aquatic Harbor Board of Directors Meeting. And that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Cohen?
I believe they're still in the emergency room.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you. Just real quick, want to recognize one of my old colleagues, Mr. Harry Crisp sitting in the audience. Represented George Washington District for four years and had the good sense not to run for reelection. But Harry, it's great to see. I saw Harry yesterday, as a matter of fact, in Gruerich's Pharmacy. I went into Gruerich's and got a glass of lemonade. Don't roll your eyes, Jack. But got to see Harry and his lovely bride, so it was a great time. But welcome, Harry. Just a couple real quick things. Want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Fourth of July. And let's remember what the Fourth of July is all about. It's about celebrating the birth of this great nation. And last, just to remind the public that our next meeting will be on August the 20th. We're taking a six-week sabbatical. So thank you very much. Okay, report of the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time.
County Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, we've included the report on strategic priorities and other initiatives. I will note that in the, just in the last two meetings, about 10 of these items have been before you for some action. So I think our plan is driving the work that comes in front of you and your set of priorities. Don't have any report except to answer any questions you may have. I did want to mention that one of the other initiatives on here is the court project, and wanted to let you know that the request for proposals for design services for the court will actually be going out before the end of the month. So that will start a process for selecting a contractor and then ultimately the design process. So that will be underway before long. Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the county administrator? Approval of the consent agenda. I had no items pulled. Do I hear a motion to approve? I have a motion from Ms. Mauer and a second by Ms. Baumke. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. And the motion passes six to zero with one absent. Unfinished business, item number 22. County administration requests the Circuit Court to order a referendum question be placed on the ballot regarding the issuance of county's general obligation bonds to finance various road projects. Mr. Smith?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. May I have the computer, please? Is this thing not working again? All right, as you know, the board identified a priority project list and a $50 million bond amount at the June 18th meeting. The project list, which was titled Option 1A, included several major projects and quite a few safety and road widening projects. Today, the board will consider a resolution to request the Circuit Court to order a special election on November 5th. This election will be held at the same time as the regular election scheduled that day. Staff will develop an engagement plan to communicate the information related to the project and propose bond referendum, and we will bring that back to the board on August 20th. This is a Option 1A. It's a reminder of those projects that were selected for the major road constructions. It would be Shelton Shop, Garrisonville Road, Onville Road, Mountain View Road, Route 1 and Eden Road intersection, Leland Road, Morton and Layhill Roads. Are there any questions about the road project list? This is a map showing those major projects as well as the list of all of the road widening and safety projects that, one of which is Stephanaga Road that Mrs. Mauer mentioned. As you can see from the map, these roads are all across the county. This is an example of the road bond referendum question that we presented to you last time. And it basically lists the large road construction projects and the road widening projects. It's very specific and lists all of those roads. When we spoke with bond counsel, they suggested that we may want to consider having a question that is more simplified for the public and simply state that the county is contracting a debt for road projects in the amount of $50 million. They thought the simpler, shorter version may be easier for citizens to understand. They suggested that a communication plan could include the explanations, since many other jurisdictions use the deployed version. Staff believes the board would like to maintain the specificity of the road projects and recommends moving forward with the original question as previously presented. And so I just wanted to get direction from the board. Do they want to move forward with the road projects that listed so that the citizens know exactly what they're voting for, or would they like to follow bond counsel's suggestion?
Ms. Mauer has a question, then, Mr. Dudenheffer. Ms. Mauer?
So I was under the impression, when we did this before, and I wasn't here for this, and we listed several parks, and we racked and stacked some of the funding, and not all parks actually got fixed with the bond funds, if I remember correctly. But if we don't list a road and we find out through additional information that, let's say, a large development goes in, and so now that road, which wasn't, which was safe before, is now kind of of concern because of a major development that has popped up over this 10-year history, regardless of whether or not there's specificity in the language, could we add that? I noticed that there's some language that says "and other safety improvement projects as needed." Can you give me some clarification on that?
Right. Other safety improvement projects as needed is another thing that could be added to give some flexibility. However, along with the bond question, you have to have the explanation and the information. And I know in 2008, the board was concerned that future boards may decide to do other projects, and so they wanted that specificity so that it would stick to the youth driver task force at that time. And at this time, it would be the road study that was conducted by Mr. Dayton. So it's the board's option which way they would like to go.
Okay, but they could amend it regardless of the specificity with either language?
No, with the specific language, it would only be available to those bond projects.
To those projects? Because I noticed that you guys added something on here at the end of the original question that said "and other projects."
Yeah, and for this presentation, we removed that.
Oh, you did remove it? Okay.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
Having been here and seen what a failed bond referendum looks like and a successful bond referendum looks like, the public needs to know that we are not just spending money on anything that's out there, that we are specific and dedicated. We've done our analysis. So I think even though, yes, we're going to have questions from the public, they're going to, it will be complicated. We have super professional communicators. They'll, we'll try and get that message out, but we need to have the specificity. I am glad they recognized Mr. Crisp in the audience. It's very appropriate that Harry be here at this. We wouldn't have gotten the second bond referendum passed had it not been the efforts of Mr. Crisp at the time, and he was a great partner with me. I'll be indebted to him for many, many, many years. But I fully believe that we need to be specific to give the public the confidence that we're going to do what we say we're going to do. And it also, one of the problems we've always had is how do you bind a future board to do what, you know, what you're planning to do? So how do we justify putting weak language in and then the next board coming in and saying, hey, I, you know, I'm going to do all these other things that could have political tales to them. This has no real political tale to it. So I recommend that we stay with the specificity. Are we at the point where I can make a Are we at the point where I could make a motion?
Well, the resolution will remain the same either way. This will just be direction to staff, so what we submit to Circuit Court, but I would recommend approval of the resolution.
Mr. Cavalier.
I, I agree with Mr. Dudenheffer.
Excuse me, Mr. Cavalier.
I apologize. One clarifying statement. It sounds as if the board does not want the discretionary language, so if the board chooses to move forward with the resolution R-1920, sorry, R-19218, I recommend that number three be struck because that removes the discretionary language that has been talked about.
Okay. Mr. Cavalier.
Again, I, I also agree with Mr. Dudenheffer's comments on the specificity of the roads because we, we had a very diligent process here. It was done correctly, and we firmly believe that these are the roads that need addressed. If, if we do not do that, down the road, there will be people who will change what we've done. And, yes, there will be additional roads that, that become problems, and we'll have to deal with those as we, as we see it, but we, we can do that then, but I, I wouldn't leave it open-ended. Plus, I think it has a much greater chance of passage if you list out every single road because people live on those roads.
Any other comments? Ms. Bomke.
Yeah, so I, given that years ago, I used to do this kind of work for a living, and I, in my opinion, I disagree with bond counsel, and the more specific you are, the better. And especially in this day and age where, you know, there's not a lot of support sometimes for elected officials and they don't believe everything that we say, we need to be very specific in what we're telling the public on what these funds need to be spent for, spent on. The only thing that I would recommend, because I think it takes the importance out of any of the projects that are listed first, I would recommend that we actually put them all in alphabetical order. The road widening projects, as well as the road projects themselves.
Good idea. Ms. Shelton, and then Ms. Mauer.
I concur with my fellow board members. I think that we need that specific list of whatever that is going to be covered in this bond referendum. One of the reasons, and the only reason I voted for, frankly, the $50 million package, if you will, was because by doing so, that provided us additional capital expenditures that we could use in the future should something occur. I needed that flexibility for myself because we never know what is going to happen in the future. So, yes, we can decide on these particular roads, and we need to be able to tell our residents that this is the highest priority roads, these are the ones that we're going to fund and go and do that. So I support my peers in ensuring that we have this specificity and definitely not have any discretionary language.
Ms. Mauer.
No, it's just, I'm sorry, I was looking at the resolution themselves. I'm, I'm extremely concerned about the words that are on the paper. And, and you're right, the resolution does have the specificity. So the back up to the resolution, which has the question, the question is, is vague. So is that, are we removing that attachment?
So the attachment that is in the board's package is not what's going to be included. The resolution itself provides the specificity.
Okay.
However, in the very first paragraph under the resolved language, the number three, the other transportation safety improvement projects within the adopted CIP as in different times, that needs to be removed from the resolution, but the rest of the resolution will stand.
Okay.
And the question as presented by Mr. Smith with the addition of the roads in alphabetical order, if the board so chooses, will be what's presented to the Circuit Court.
Okay, wonderful. And, and I, I do agree with everyone else that the specificity is key. And before I make any additional comments, because we're in questions, did you want to see a resolution, Mr. Dudenheffer?
Hold on. Can you bring the computer back up, please?
We jumped the gun.
Computer, please.
No. You're fine. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had a picture of the question.
That one.
The one thing we will change, we will put the roads in alphabetical order, but this is what will be the question that is presented to the Circuit Court.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith, bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move for R-19-218, asking the Circuit Court to place a bond referendum on the ballot in November with, the only change from, is to list all the projects in alphabetical order.
Second.
What's that?
Yeah, and strike number three.
And strike number three. Sorry, I wrote that here.
I heard a motion from Ms. Shelton. Second from Ms. Shelton, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
A motion, Mr. Dudenheffer, second, Mr. Shelton. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Six to nothing with one absent. Is Mr. Cohen back online? He said yes. Okay, seven to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Smith. On to November the 5th. Item number 23, Planning and Zoning Consider amendments to the Transfer Development Rights Program and Guidance for Healthy Growth Initiatives to Reduce Development Pressures in Rural Areas and Incentivize Development in the Targeted Growth Areas of the County. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is a continuation of our discussion that we had on March 4th, excuse me, May 4th, and also discussion that we had, sorry, June 4th. Got my dates all mixed up here. And also the discussion we had earlier this af, this afternoon with regard to a work session. We were talking about the board's strategic plan and how to promote healthy growth. The purpose of the discussion was to seek board input with regard to transfer of development rights program as our means to achieve healthy growth, whereas the board would utilize the transfer of development rights program in concert with a change in the residential zoning aspect for agricultural land to incentivize development into our targeted growth areas. So part of what we would be discussing is the criteria for development rights for the TDR program, the boundaries of our sending and receiving areas, possible incentives for TDR use, and the process moving forward. We did receive input from the board in, in the work session this afternoon, and we'll summarize that as we go along with the slides. This is our strategic priority in the strategic plan to identify and execute growth management strategies that align our comprehensive plan and infrastructure without negatively impacting taxation. And again, trying to incentivize growth into our targeted growth areas and evaluate the zoning for the areas where water and sewers currently not planned, and also to keep our rural character. And again, the board has determined that we will look at potential reduction in residential density in the agricultural zones and utilize transfer of development rights for that purpose. Specifically with regard to our program, we have an existing TDR program in the county. It mainly is focused in the Aquia District. It has a sending area where we don't want development to occur. It gives the property owners the option to sever their development rights and send them to a receiving area, which is in the courthouse area. That, that area currently encompasses the Aquia and the Hartwood election districts. So we will be looking at potentially expanding that concept throughout the county. And in particular, when we do this, we have to, by state law, look at the number of development rights that can be yielded in the sending area and ensure that the zoning in the receiving area is adjusted to be able to accommodate those development rates. And that requires a number of changes to our zoning district regulations, as well as our comprehensive plan. Some input in that, aspects that we wanted to get some direction from the board was the intent with regard to the rural landowners and trying to keep them whole, whether that was something that was desired and how to go about doing that. In particular, our current process requires that to be able to participate with the TDR program, you have to have a minimum of 20 acres. Also, if we wanted to change those parameters, it may affect the way we calculate development rights, and there could be concerns about loss of development rights to many landowners, so that was part of our work session discussion. Also, we discussed in the work session what areas we want to have for the sending and receiving areas, where it should encompass all the A1 zone property outside the urban services area for the sending areas, and whether or not they should include all their targeted growth areas. We have multiple targeted growth areas in the county. Also, we were discussing what hap, what should the staff do in developing these calculations that are required in the event that we have more development rights that could be sent, then we can adjust in our zoning ordinance to be received in the receiving areas and maintain compliance with our growth projections and the comprehensive plan. And we did receive guidance on that. And also discuss what sort of incentives we can use for transfer of development rights. So the input from the work session was, yes, the board wants to try to keep the rural landowners whole through this TDR process. We want to try to make the process easy. Our current process allows somebody that wants to sever development rights to make an application to our office, planning and zoning, and they would provide information on their survey of the property and information prepared by an engineer on what hydroic soils they have and other things that disqualify it from participating with TDR. From then, we would determine development rights, and then the owner can move through the process of severing those development rights and selling them to a developer. The board felt that it was important to, again, trying to keep landowners whole by suggesting that we extend the TDR to tracks less than 20 acres in size. So there would be not a situation where the larger landowners can participate and the smaller landowners can't. So that would help resolve that concern. Also, there was some discussion about trying to ensure that property owners could get the same number of development rights through TDRs they could achieve through a conventional subdivision development. So what we would look at doing is keeping the current process for determining development rights, since that's been proven effective with our purchase of development rights program and, and looking at comparative development with regard to large lot subdivisions. And then utilizing that, and then a property owner, if they felt that they were getting undercounted for development rights, could submit supplemental information to the county demonstrating that they could indeed yield additional lots. So the areas to be considered for the sending and receiving areas, it was the consensus at the work session that all the property outside the urban services area should be our number one priority. But if we find out that we have too many sending TDRs, that we could consider excluding the cluster-approved area. So that would mean if we had too many TDRs from outside the urban services area, we could keep the cluster-approved area currently as it's configured, if that was how the calculations worked out. And again, we would be coming back to the board with another work session to give more details and flesh this out in more specifics. And also, it was determined that we should use, utilize all the targeted growth areas as the receiving areas.
Mr. Harvey, Ms. Mauer has a question.
I just, I have a quick question, and this is incredibly important. This is the more detailed area as far as the TDR, but at what point, so it was TDR in combination with a downzoning effort, at what point are we going to talk about that aspect? So there are two decisions made by the board. A, what are we going to do with the new TDR program, and B, what are we going to do as part of the second part of the implementation process?
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Mauer, it was stated at the work session that the board wants these processes to run in tandem. The TDR proj, process is a bit more complicated and does take a lot more upfront work.
Okay.
So we would hope that we would be bringing it back in multiple discussions with the board, and then at some point in time, we would marry the two processes together.
Okay.
Because I understand it's the board's desire to run these in tandem, so people are assured that if their density is being reduced for potential housing development, they're getting an offset.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just making sure that, I, I appreciate this, but that there was a two-prong vote that, that occurred to, several weeks ago.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
And as far as incentives for TDR, there was discussion about keeping the current program situation where one development right from a sending area would equate to one development right in a receiving area, which is essentially a housing unit or 3,000 square feet of commercial square, square footage. So that's what we currently have in, in the current process, but the board also asked that staff come back with more detailed explanation of other potential density bonus incentives that could be provided in the receiving areas. For general knowledge, this is our comprehensive land use plan map. It shows the targeted growth areas, which are highlighted in the hashed brown color. So we have the Warnton Road area, we have the Leland Station area, Central Stafford or Centerport area, the courthouse area, and the Brook area. So these would be where the development rights would come from, from various parts of the rural areas of the county. And in discussion with the board, there was a question about whether or not we wanted to have certain areas of the county be targeted from a sending perspective to certain receiving areas. And the board felt that it, in the work session, it was important to maintain flexibility for the property owners, where we would not target specific sending areas to specific receiving areas. So anywhere in the county where you were severing development rights from a sending area, you could land them in a receiving area anywhere else in the county. So that allows the market to dictate where development's going to go and doesn't hold people hostage with regard to their development rates. With regard to process options, in discussion at the work session, it was asked about the possibility of creating a task force to discuss how to move forward with the transfer of development rights and bring that back to the board for review and consideration. Then also, a discussion about the board having been more directly involved in the discussion and, and having work sessions on, in how to accomplish this. And we provided timelines for consideration. This was Option 1, which is a board consideration of a timeline with attempting to accomplish this before November. And as you may recall, that in your bylaws, it says during election year, the board will not take up any major land use issues in November and December. So this timeline would try to accomplish that goal. We will note that it's fairly compressed. There are some issues or, with timing and coordination with the Planning Commission. There may need to be some cross-advertising as far as the public notification in newspaper in relation to the timing, when the Planning Commission hearing is held and when the Board of Supervisors hearing is advertised, and/or it can be accomplished through a joint public hearing process. Option 2 is, since it is a complicated issue, it may require multiple work sessions with the board and may require that we go beyond the November timeline and require a modification of the bylaws to get into November and December before final action is taken. Then Option 3 would be proceed with this issue into the next year, which would give some more flexibility as far as when the board and Planning Commission can meet to discuss this.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, just to, the one action that also came out of that was that the board was not interested in Option Number 1, which would require joint public hearing. So unless there's a different thought on that at this point, I think Option 2 and 3 are the only things we didn't get direction on. So that's before you for consideration.
Ms. Mauer.
So Option 2, with the timeline that you have presented, taking away any joint public hearings, I think, and then if we don't get through it, we go into the next election. But with the timeline that you have presented through October, I, I mean, I think that's kind of how we march forward, and, and if this becomes a pressing issue where we need to make a decision in the November, December timeframe, I think this board can discuss that at the time. Do you have to have that answer right now?
We, we have to plan a very aggressive schedule if we're going to get to finishing this by the end of October.
Okay.
Very aggressive, and therefore, we'd have to do some things very differently and get things to you earlier and so forth. So we really do need direction as to whether we're shooting for the end of October or whether you want to act by the end of the year, or if with your fine, with it just kind of going into the next calendar year.
Yes.
I think that's real important in terms of how we plan work sessions and engagement with the Planning Commission and so forth. We've gotten direction from you that we should not plan for any joint hearings.
Right.
Which means getting all this done by the end of October is extremely aggressive. There will have to be some cross advertisements, as, as Jeff said. I think that the other statement the board made was that you didn't want to do anything I think that the other statement the board made was that you didn't want to do anything different than you would normally do it. And that was in reference to joint hearings as an example. But I don't think that by the end of October, we can get there without doing some things different. We don't usually cross advertise and basically put advertisements for board hearings before the Planning Commission's even had their hearing.
Right.
So I think if that is the principle you want to rely on, I don't think finishing this by the end of October is consistent with it.
Okay.
But if it drifts into November and December, then you have another difficult decision about whether you want to revise your action related to the bylaws. The only one that truly keeps you consistent with the way we do all of this is to let it shift into the next year. So we need some direction on that so that we can prepare how aggressively to schedule work sessions and so forth.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so as the board member coming off of this and working with Mr. Dudenheffer over the last year and a half, I believe we've been working on this, Mr. Dudenheffer, I'm disappointed because I am going to be leaving. However, I believe that regardless of who gets elected, that what Rock Hill is looking for would more than likely be carried on. It's when we get to the November-December timeframe, I'm okay with making a decision at that particular juncture, but I don't think we should be doing joint public hearings. And that is of great concern to me. The public doesn't like that, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Harvey? Anything at all? Ms. Bomke.
So when we voted for the TDR back in 2016, if I remember correctly, we kind of voted on it as a pilot program, if you will. Do you feel that we've gone through enough of the what-if scenarios and that our TDR program is working the way we anticipated it working? Do you feel like we're kind of through the quote pilot period at this point in time?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bomke, we are, as I mentioned in the work session, on the cusp of actually having the land development occur where development rights are being transferred. We haven't gotten to that complete point yet, but every indication we have is that we've got a program that's fully functional and should be operating effectively. We did recently, this past year, make a tweak to the ordinance based on the land developer perspective on the receiving side of things, trying to get a better clarity on when they have to attach their development rights to the zoning of the receiving area property. And we resolved that issue. So I think we're very well poised to have an effective program.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Giles, is Mr. Cohen still on the line?
Yes.
Could you ask him if he has any questions? Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Cohen, do you have any questions for Mr. Harvey?
No, thank you. Just break it off.
I assume that was no.
I heard no.
Okay. All right. And no further questions?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, I think just to clarify, I think the question that staff would have would be whether you want to target this potentially for action before the end of the year, not October, or whether we should plan it for action after the end of the year. I think if we get some clarity on that, we can define the schedule to be sure it accommodates what you want to do.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, bring it back to the board. You're looking for a motion to, for option one, two, or three, correct?
I think, I think just for the simplicity of it, since we've eliminated some options, is just whether you want to target completion potentially by the end of the year or after. So one of those two options, I think, are the ones that are on the table.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Dudenheffer.
Move that we target completion by the end of the year.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, having a discussion. Mr. Cavalier.
I still haven't seen the urgency need here, so I'm going to defer to the waiting until next year when we know we have everything in order. So that's the position I'll take.
Any other comments? Ms. Bomke. Mr. Cohen.
So, Mr. Cavalier, did you make a substitute motion to move it into next year?
I'll go ahead and do that now. So I'll move for option number three, which is next year.
Okay, then I'll second it.
I have a substitute motion by Mr. Cavalier and a second by Mr. Cohen. Bring it back to the board for discussion. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Shelton.
This is probably, inarguably, the absolutely most important decision that I'm ever going to make. And so I want to go through this thoughtfully. I want to make sure that we consider the things that we are. I'm not talking about delaying things. But when staff showed us a timeline and really showed us all the intricacies and the decisions that have to be made that are behind the scenes, it really drove home how important this is. We are affecting property values, and what we are doing has absolutely got to be done correctly. So I'm going to vote with Mr. Cavalier, I assume, since you did that vote, that motion, but I'm going to vote with you to go for the longer period.
Any other comments on the substitute motion?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes, just quickly, to add to Ms. Shelton's comment, this is complex. This impacts people's livelihoods. It impacts people greatly. And I, too, have been studying TDRs since way back when we first started our comp plant. And it is a very complex issue, and rushing it between, the choices between December and January, that doesn't seem to be making sense to rush it. So that's in favor of waiting. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I, too, will support the substitute motion. I think, I think we're going to come up with a plan that's not really going to impact property values. That's my goal. And I don't want to put undue pressure on our staff to rush this through or push it through, even though we've been working on it for a year and a half. I know that. But I think, I think we're at a point where we can, I don't think we need to rush it. I don't think the public wants us to rush it. It's a very important issue. It needs to be carefully gone through by staff, and to put a lot of pressure on them just wouldn't be fair. So I will support the substitute motion.
With that said, yes, Ms. Bomke.
I think the other thing that we need to recognize is that the, we're going to be in the middle of this whole bond issue as well. And there's a story that has to be told about that. And staff has a lot of other things on their plate. So why, I initially wanted to move forward with the October, you know? It's always good to listen to colleagues and play devil's advocate and look at all the different scenarios, and I'll probably support that.
Okay. With that said, cast your votes for the substitute.
I vote yes.
For the substitute motion. Cast, tally the votes. Substitute motion passes, Ms. Bomke, seven to zero. Item number 24, Planning and Zoning, establish a Complete Count Committee to support the upcoming 2020 census. Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Chairman and board members, we had an initial discussion back in April with the board about the census day, which was April 1st. That's one year in advance of when the census will be finalized next year in 2020. As part of that process, the federal government recommends that localities and local jurisdictions establish complete count committees to help get the word out about the census and inform the public. We did so in the, in 2010 and had a complete count committee. There's a recommendation in Resolution R-19-220 to do the same. The membership is recommended to include 12 participating members of the CCC. The count committee would comprise two board members, two members of the education community, two representatives from major employment groups, faith-based organizations, intergovernmental agencies, NAACP, National Organization for the Advancement of Hispanics, Chamber of Commerce, hard-to-count communities, and also citizens at large. In May, the George Washington Regional Commission decided to establish a process for regional CCC. There, it's contemplated they will become the hub for training of the complete count committees at the local level, but a lot of the groundwork will occur here at the local level, at the county. So staff is recommending the board consider adoption of Resolution R-19-220.
Any questions? Mr. Harvey. Mr. Cohen. Ms. Mauer.
So I see that there are two members of the Board of Supervisors. Will we then, if we pass this resolution, is this like every other board committee that we have, somebody will submit and then we will approve who goes on that committee? They submit a board application? It's that particular process?
I think the intention here was to, and I'll let Jeff clarify and any other staff who's been a little more involved, but really just to have folks that represent agencies that are going to be able to identify where these populations are that need to be identified. So it's not really a political appointee kind of committee.
Okay.
When we get to the census and the new district, voting districts, that's a whole different process, and we will need you all to chime in on this. This is more staff work and getting the right representatives involved.
And while I appreciate that, the resolution actually says that we'll establish a complete count committee representing a cross-section with the following representatives. And there's two members of the Board of Supervisors, two members of the education and schools. So how do we know who those people are? Does staff just find two people that raise their hands?
We'll just bring it back to you on August 20th with the details.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Harvey, Mr. Dudenheffer.
Jeff, we, Mr. Cavalier and I here are talking. We don't understand, what was the origin of this?
The Complete Count Committee?
Yeah.
It's a best practice recommendation from the Census Bureau in trying to get information out to the public for participation in the census. Some of the background information is that the City of Richmond did a study in their particular jurisdiction. They estimated for every person that's not counted, it costs the City of Richmond $2,000 per year. Over the next decade, that'd be $20,000 per person. So it does have a direct impact on funding to locality if we can maximize participation. So the big thing is to get communication out to people, to make them aware that they need to participate and the importance of it for our community.
So, I mean, physically, how did this get onto our agenda? And I don't recall talking about it. It's an unfinished business. When did we talk about it?
Thank you for the presentation.
Oh, that was the meeting. I don't think I was here, but.
If I was here, I don't remember it.
Is there any cost associated for us? I mean, does this committee require a budget?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dudenheffer, it's up to what the locality wants to do. Some localities hire staff, they put together a budget, they put out freebies to give to the public to try to get them engaged and remember about the census. So it's a matter of what level that we want to pursue at the local jurisdiction side.
We're really doing this in coordination with the Planning District Commission, which is really going to just coordinate regional efforts. There had been some talk about whether we would want to do any extra work that might get the word out about complete count. That'd be something the committee would look at and would have to come back to you all before there'd be any more, any funding spent on it.
So we're doing this in conjunction with GWRC? I mean, is that the, and then the head of, the executive director of GWRC and her husband, who is the director, I guess, of the region's census?
There's, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to get it clear in my mind where, how we got here and where, where is it going to go? I mean, we create this committee, are we going to be on the hook for funding their work?
Well, I don't think it mentions anything about funding.
No, but I mean, once you're on the path, how do you stop that?
Mr. Chairman, if it's the board's pleasure, we can come back with some more clarity on these questions. There's no, there's no immediate rush on it. I guess I would say to you that this is the kind of thing that's going on all over the country, just to accurately count. We just recently went to a local government managers' conference, and we had a presentation about the fact that a lot of folks don't realize they're supposed to count their own kids. They think if they're not adults, it doesn't count on the census. And so there's even an effort out there to coordinate educating the public that we really need to know if you have a number of kids. And again, the federal and state aid we get as a number of this count, as a result of this count, is pretty critical in terms of the loss of the revenues. But I can see that there's some questions that we really just need to directly answer in preparation for this. So why don't we move this to the 20th, and we'll give you some more information, tell you a little bit more about what the Planning District Commission's going to do? Because the reason they're involved is to keep localities from having to do more work. They can do it better on a regional basis, but we're still going to have pockets of areas that we probably could identify where things are undercounted almost every census. And we're just trying to be sure we do that, a good job of that.
So one of the things that gets extremely frustrating is I sit on the local board, and then I sit on the regional boards, and then there's, and so what I don't want to see is that, and it's not in this resolution, which is why I said, how are these people going to be appointed to this complete count committee? So if the Regional Commission is going to head this up and coordinate it and provide whatever funds, and they just want us to appoint people, you know, locally that's going to help in their efforts? Because I agree with Mr. Dudenheffer and Mr. Cavalier. We start one of these committees, and the next thing you know, well, we can't do what we need to do until we get some money. And you already established the committee, so there are, how it's going to operate, how these people are going to be selected, how, and most importantly, how much it's going to cost us is going to be. And I used to head up, just as a, for Stafford Schools, every three years, they have to do a census count of all the school-aged children, regardless of whether or not they're in the public schools. And long ago, we did an analysis, and so for every kid that doesn't get counted in that census, it was $1,500 of state funding for Stafford County Public Schools. So I do understand the importance of it from representation and whatnot. But what I don't want to see is kind of a Keystone Cops-looking scenario if they're doing it at the regional level and the local level, and everybody's contributing money and stepping all over each other.
Okay, decision's made. Move it to the 20th of August. Item number 25, Planning and Zoning, approve a new policy for processing zoning applications and accepting proffer statements. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board may be aware, there was a bill that passed at Journal Assembly this past year, which is House Bill 2342, which changed the way the county can discuss proffers with developers. This bill is more advantageous to us. It does, however, have some interesting aspects in that it kept the prior legislation intact as well as prior legislation before that. So we have three sets of legislation that we have to consider when we're looking at rezoning applications and proffer amendments. In reviewing the proposed legislation, we note that it gives the Board of Supervisors more flexibility than we previously had under the past legislation, whereas the board can more actively discuss what the impacts of a development are in relation to rezoning. We also have the ability to more effectively negotiate proffers.
Computer, please.
The prior legislation limited our ability to negotiate proffers for specific public improvements, roads, schools, parks. And this legislation that is now in place allows more flexibility for what we would consider to be impacted public facilities. And the new legislation would allow the developer to determine whether or not their proffer that they're offering is reasonable or unreasonable, rather than the statute dictating that. It allows the county to better mitigate its impacts through rezoning in looking at proportionate share of impact. As I mentioned earlier, it gives the ability for the board to have more verbal discussions with developers, and it requires the notice be provided by the applicant to the board if they feel like the board is asking for an unreasonable proffer. Prior to that, there were certain limitations on what the board could ask from a developer, and it would be automatically deemed unreasonable. But now, the developer has to tell the board that they feel it's being unreasonable. So again, as I mentioned earlier... So again, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have three types of rezoning and proffer amendment applications, ones filed prior to July one of 2016, between 2016 and the present, and after July one of this year. And we are going to be modifying our application forms to reflect these various different types of proffer statements that could come in under the different legislation. But we're also asking the board to consider adopting a new resolution dealing with establishing a process for processing rezoning applications. We had previously had, with the 2016 legislation, a resolution that dictated what the requirements are for filing an application, so this would be a follow-up. The specific policy recommendations are to, in the resolution effect, when an application, or I should say, an applicant must select which set of provisions that they're going to submit their application under when it's filed, and then also staff has to advise the board and the Planning Commission of that. So it makes it very clear as to what set of standards the board and Planning Commission have when they discuss the application with the developer. Also, we talk about the, after it's considered to be filed, they'll have to meet all the requirements of that resolution as well. And then in the proffer statements, they will have to have the proffer statement signed and executed in a more timely manner than we currently require. Also, there's a provision in the amendments to, or resolution to limit the time which a zoning application can be considered to be active, limited to eighteen months. We currently have some rezoning applications that have been sitting dormant for years, waiting for more favorable conditions for their application. But those applications generally are stale, and this proposed resolution would have them expire after eighteen months unless the board was to grant them an extension. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions, Mr. Harvey?
You may have.
You know, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Bring it back to the board. What's your pleasure? I have a motion to approve R nineteen dash one eighty-eight. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Shelton. Any discussion? Hearing on, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Mr. Cohen, you can holler. He's off the line? Okay. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to nothing with one absent. New business, number twenty-six, finance and budget, budget and appropriate schools' lease proceeds to support an energy management, energy performance contract, proposed resolution R nineteen dash two sixteen. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex Espinosa, CFO. This item is up for you today for information. Mr. Fulmer is here from the school system to give you an overview of the project. It's a budget and appropriation item. We'll bring it back to the board for action on August twentieth, to support an energy performance contract. Mr. Fulmer's here to give you an overview.
Okay.
Good afternoon, board members. Mr. Foley. I'm just going to give you some quick background. About two years ago, school staff started working with county staff to pursue this project, and in that, making sure that we didn't impact debt capacity and that the financial guidelines of the county would would allow us to pursue this. Ultimately, the energy performance contract, we followed a state guidelines from DMME on energy savings contract, which they have pre-qualified vendors, bidders. We put out an RP for that process, selected a vendor out of that. From there, they do an audit of all of our facilities and come back with recommendations. And long story short is, we are asking to borrow $10.6 million on a master lease, and we did work with county staff there as well to make sure we're following the proper mechanisms. That is in process, and we don't anticipate that to be ready even by our next board meeting. So as Alex mentioned, we are bringing this for information for you guys, and then we'll take it to our board in in August, pending appropriation by the Board of Supervisors on August twentieth, I believe, is your your August meeting. And an important note is, of the $10.6 million, all of it is guaranteed by the contractor. So the energy savings are, in essence, going to pay 100% plus sum of this contract.
Ms. Mauer?
So this is really sending me into the Wayback Machine. When I worked for Stafford County Public Schools as a, on special projects, this is, this was one of the projects I worked on. And to see that it was in 2004, that's a long time ago. One of the questions that I had back then, which I'm hoping that you'll present at our next board meeting, is how do we guarantee those savings? What sort of mechanisms do you utilize? Because theoretically, what's supposed to be is that the energy savings are supposed to more than make up for the debt payment or the master lease payment. And what I'm curious about is the mechanism with which we we validate the energy savings and in respect to, and and how it balances out with the lease payment.
Sure. So I'm going to try to answer that now, and if I don't answer it fully, I can come back with additional information. But staff have vast information, and we track, you know, not just dollars, but kilowatts per hour of of all of our energy consumption. So we take that baseline that's already developed, and then we can track that for the following years and each year. Part of the contract is also in an energy audit, basically, to verify what the savings are each year, to make sure it is covering those energy costs.
So if you can just include the historical information from the two previous, that that would be great, just for my own edification.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and we'll bring it back on the twentieth. Items twenty-seven and twenty-eight, I am told, we will need to declare it time-sensitive due to our summer recess. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and and this went through, I think, direct contact with you all about getting the date straight after the committee reviewed it.
Correct.
And following that discussion also helped to establish the second item, which is the direction to the school board about our schedule. So those things really mirror each other. It's just a way for you to send a a direct message to the school board about the things that they're going to need to do to to fit the calendar.
Okay. Do I have a motion from the board to declare these time-sensitive?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Dudenheffer. I think you were first. Any discussion? Hearing on, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. Number twenty-seven, finance and budget, consider adoption of the FY 2021 budget calendar. Ms. Light.
Thank you, Supervisor Snelling. Andrea Light, Budget Director for Stafford County. Today, we're asking the board to consider the fiscal year 2021 budget calendar. The calendar lays out a planning and foundation for the Long-Term Financial Plan, the CIP, and the adoption of the annual budget. During the June eighteenth Fab meetings, staff presented this to get direction from that committee, and that direction's been incorporated within this resolution. We are also asked to put these meetings on the board's calendars, and the clerks of the board have graciously done that work for us. Finally, we have confirmed all joint meetings with the board and the school board through the clerk of the school board, and joint meetings are being held on the school board's calendar. The proposed budget in CIP is, as prepared on proposed resolution nineteen two oh eight, is scheduled to be presented on February eighteenth. This is about two weeks earlier than we have done this in the past, and we feel that moving this forward will give the board the opportunity to have a budget work session prior to doing an advertisement of a tax rate. During the reviews of the calendar with the Fab, we were asked to plan for follow-up meetings to all the budget work sessions for the annual budget, and we have placed those items also on this calendar. The CIP is scheduled to start on August sixteenth with the submission of all CIP projects for schools and county, and this also includes the transportation projects. The schedule calls for two joint work sessions with the board and the school board, the first on October fifteenth, to ensure that the board has a clear understanding of the school's priorities, needs, and supporting data, and on December third, as a presentation of the Technical Review Committee's ranking of projects. These two meetings are meant to continue the dialogue between both boards and provide answers to the board's questions prior to the adoption of the CIP. The Long-Term Financial Plan is scheduled for presentation for general funds and utilities in, on November sixth, with a review of Transportation Five-Year Plan on November nineteenth, after we have the bond referendum just answered through the election. The final work session with the board is scheduled on December seventeenth to have final recommendations, and the board is being asked today to consider proposed resolution, like Mr. Foley said, to have this, because this, there, the first item is on August sixteenth, and there won't be another board meeting, that this item is time-sensitive.
Any questions, Ms. Light? Thank you very much. Bring it back to the board. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I have a motion by Ms. Mauer. Second by Ms. Baumke. Any discussion?
Are there two resolutions? No.
I do want to to make one comment, and I appreciate the budget calendar that you guys have prepared. I I know it seems like that we pick on the schools quite a bit because we don't get the information from them, and and looking at the next item where we're specifically sending them a letter. But I want it to, everyone to notice that it's from Public Works, and it's from the Sheriff's Department. And so we have all of these other organizations that we request information from, and as we move forward through this budget process, I would like added to just our informational item, which deadlines, which departments are meeting, and and if there are deadlines that aren't being met, to bring that to the board's attention immediately. Because we got to the end of the road here, and we didn't have the information necessary, which kind of made us scramble and not necessarily make make fully-vetted decisions. And so as we move along in this process, I think it's really important to have a red, yellow, green chart on on all of these dates that we're setting forward, and whether or not those dates are being met by all of our departments.
Well, I, any other discussion on that? I disagree with that. County administrators pay a pretty good salary to make sure this stuff is done. And the only reason we're doing it for schools is because this is a separate body. We have absolutely no control across the street, and we have to have this information. If we're not getting information from our departments, I'm going to look to that gentleman at the end. I'm not going to look at a department manager. So I I disagree with, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. That's just one person's opinion. Go ahead, Ms. Mauer.
Well, while I appreciate that that he he's in control of the departments, we also have an elected treasurer who gets their information in on time. We have an elected sheriff who gets their information in on time, and he doesn't have any jurisdiction over them. They're elected, and they get their information in on time. We have one body that is also elected and separate that we're not getting the information that we need. And so that was what I meant, not necessarily the departments, but but those.
If you're talking about those, those departments that we, yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I meant. I apologize.
I thought you were getting down to the, all the other departments.
No, no, because he's in control of those, and by default, so are we. I'm talking about the other elected officials.
I agree. Yes, Ms. Baum.
So I just want to say thank you to Andrea and your staff and working with Tom to make sure that we are doing this two weeks in advance this year. And and I see Chris Farmer sitting in the back, and I know we'll be sending a letter over to the superintendent and to the school board chair, but even if they don't have all their final numbers from the state, they can still submit a budget to us, subject to any additional amendments. And I think that's really important, because sometimes they get hung up on that. So in that letter, if we could please make it clear that it can be a subject to, but we need their budget sooner rather than later to start scrubbing it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six, nothing with one absent.
Mr. Chairman, just one final issue. We will ask you on those dates to hold your calendar open from two to five. That's what we kind of put out there. We'll nail that down with you, but just wanted you to hold that, because I know at the last meeting, there was a discussion about really needing to know exactly when we're going to do this. So if you would put your, hold on there for two to five, unless there's some other preference that you'd like to.
If Cheryl can put them on our calendars, that would be great.
We will do that. We will do that.
Item number twenty-eight, county administration, a resolution to directly request the school board to provide CIP project request and data by the established due dates.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to nothing with one absent. Number twenty, and I had asked this be added to discuss landfill fees. Let me take what my discussion is first. I I get a call about three weeks ago from a constituent saying that, why are you raising my landfill fees? I said, I didn't, I don't know. I didn't know anything about it. First of all, and second of all, I don't have control over that. I did a little digging on it and found that our MOU with the city does not require public hearings. I'm very concerned about that. Every fee that we change in this county requires a public hearing. And I would like to put on the agenda for the next meeting to come back for this board to pass a resolution that the MOU be redone, that would require a public hearing for any landfill fees. The second part of it is, and this has nothing really to do with the fee, is the landfill itself. I read that report that came from the landfill and the financial report, and we can't keep digging holes and putting garbage in it. Now, a few years back, it was brought to the board. I was on the R-Board at that time, and believe me when I tell you, it was not presented well. But I think we need to look at alternatives. What they are, I don't know. But we need to look at some alternatives. But the first priority is to get that MOU redone. So that's, that's the only thing I wanted to say. You've got anything to add?
Nope. If that's all you want to cover.
Any board members? Any other discussion? Okay, we'll put that on.
I do, I do, I'm sorry.
Yes, Michelle.
I think there might be some other opportunities. I I don't know what they are particularly, but I know that in the past, we've had conversations about some other language that we might want to modify while we're reviewing the MOU. So I'd like to be open to the modifications to the R-Board MOU, not just specific to the public hearings.
That'll be fine.
And I'll say too, the the city's also getting some of the same feedback. I think they have the same concerns, so we're going to definitely talk about it at the next R-Board meeting.
Good. Okay, thank you very much. Last item on the afternoon agenda, number thirty, discuss quality of well water in the county's rural areas requested by Supervisor Shelton. Come on down, Jason.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Had a, had a few minutes earlier to talk with Ms. Shelton about the questions regarding some of the well water in rural areas. It seems that there have been complaints from time to time from residents in certain rural areas about the water quality, and and I think that there was some desire, at least, to consider going and perhaps having a a study of some sort done. Of course, we just did complete the analysis this past year of the Piedmont area. We would be happy to talk with the consultant and see what kind of fees would be involved, if that is something that the board would like us to consider.
Excuse me.
Ms. Shelton.
Mr. Tower, I'm sorry that you thought that, and because the the complaints that we're receiving about the well water are more have to do with, I think, the understanding of what type of water that we're getting out of our wells. And so in conversations with other people, I've discovered that people do not realize that we get this funky-looking stuff, that, but it's correctable. That's why we have water treatment systems. And so I I was kind of surprised by that. And so I think that I'm more interested in you dusting off some of the studies you had before, not us doing any new studies, because just in the time that I've been on the board, I think you've done significant studies related to the amount of water. This was specifically related to a complaint on Brook Road where they thought that the Brook Road construction was having an impact on their water. One of the things that you showed me was that the elevation of that individual's property versus a mile away where the constructions occurred, that's probably not going to have an impact, and just want you guys to check into that. And when you come back, when you dust off those studies and tell us what the water looks like, also let us know the results of those findings.
Yeah, sure, that'd be, that's fine, and we can go back and take a closer look at what kind of analysis was previously done in those studies. For the most part, for example, the the past study that was just most recently done was really more focused on the water quantity available, didn't really take a hard look at what what type of quality that, and that can. at what, what type of quality that, and that can, that can be very site-specific, but we'll go back and take a closer look at those, and see if there's any evidence that, or any data that we could glean out of that, that might perhaps direct us better. And then, we can certainly work with the Health Department too, to see if they have any areas of particular complaints, and try to perhaps come with some kind of localized map or something, that we could maybe push in further on.
Just, one more thing, sir. Do not rec- do not do this because one person's getting a complaint, I've just heard lots of them, and so, but I think it might be inherent in, in education and understanding of what that water looks like. So I just don't want this board to even consider one moment, that I want us to spend a penny on this, beyond our initial studies that we've already done. And I appreciate the efforts that you've done today.
Sure, we'll, we'll, we'll keep it small and focused and come back then.
Well, just based on my experience, growing up here, where there was no utility, there was no public water, everybody was on a well, and a good many people had what we called iron in the water. You couldn't drink it, you couldn't wash clothes with it. I remember my mom's best friend had to take her laundry out to do it, she couldn't do it in the house. And that's why everybody was just begging for county water, resolve a lot of those issues. So, this area's always had that problem, and I, I'm not sure what the answer would be, but it's a problem we've got. Anything else on that?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Ms., thank you, sir, Jason, and I appreciate everybody's time. We are gonna recess until 7:00 PM. I would like everyone to, ask everyone to stand, Ms. Shelton will lead us in prayer, and I will lead in the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, bless the people that are here visiting us today, bless this county, and, and bless this nation. Guide those that are in this body to think clearly, to guide our thoughts, ensure that we do all of our actions and make all our decisions without guile and love for these people that are here. Know us and touch us and guide us in all that we think, say, and do. In Jesus' name, amen.
At this time, I would like to recognize folks from the NAACP, if they would come forward, and come around the diocese, and Mr. Mike Moore, our Parks and Rec and Facility Director. The NAACP is making a presentation to our Parks and Rec Department, and, come on up, don't be shy, come on around this way. Just keep in mind, you've got a hundred thousand people watching you on television, so.
Or ten.
Or ten, yeah. Please, come on up.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Melissa Gary, and I'm the interim president of the Stafford Branch of the NAACP. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time this evening. I have an exciting announcement that I'd like to share with you. Last month, we received a request from the Department of Parks and Recs, asking that we consider sponsoring a child to summer camp. Well, when the call was made, we answered, and through member donations, we exceeded that, and it is my honor tonight to present you with a check, in the amount of $970.83. This will allow seven children to attend a program in which they probably otherwise would not have this opportunity. And that's what we're all about, making our community better. We stand ready to work with appointed and elected officials, our county boards, law enforcement, and community service organizations. And on that note, I'd like to invite you to our first annual Community Fish Fry. It's gonna take place on July 20th, it's gonna be at Shiloh New Sight Baptist Church, just, just down the street, and an excellent opportunity to come, get to know us, get to know what we're about, hang out, and have some great food. I have some flyers, I'll leave them out front for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for this, we, we really do appreciate all the work you do in our community, and especially this, to help children in our community that'll be able to go to camp, and, so I wanna recognize Suzanne Smith, our Community Recreation Manager, who oversees the camp program, and these contributions will go to her to help pay for those programs. So again, thank you all so much for what you do.
Thank you.
This time, I'm gonna recognize Ms. Bomke, who has a proclamation to recognize Jennifer Harada. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Jennifer Harada.
I'm getting good at this name pronunciation.
Jen, if you could please come forward. And also, if Principal Lewis could please come up and join us. So this is a really exciting night for Jen, being recognized by the Board of Supervisors. This woman athlete has done some tremendous things, and before she goes off to college in August, I felt it was very appropriate to have her recognized by the Board of Supervisors. I have a proclamation that kinda tells the story of what she's accomplished, since she's been in Stafford, and I heard this the other day, and actually, somebody reached out to me and said, "This woman is ninth in the world in pole vaulting." And I've read your articles in the newspaper and online, but I didn't realize how significant it really was, until I spoke to your mother, and, and heard of all your accomplishments. So, I want her to be recognized, and this is Principal Joe Lewis from Stafford High School, and I know that the teachers have been very supportive of her at the school, and she has a few words to say on that. So I'd like to read this proclamation in your honor. Whereas Jen, Jennifer Harada is a member of the Stafford High School class of 2019, and whereas Jennifer has distinguished herself both in athletics and academics, representing Stafford County both nationally and internationally. And whereas she is ranked third nationally in pole vault for outdoor, ninth in the world for U-20 Junior with the International Association of Athletics Federation. She earned fourth place with USA Track and Field, becoming a Team USA alternate qualifier to the Pan Am Games. And whereas on the state level, she won the 2019 Virginia High School League 5A Outdoor Pole Vault Championship with a new meet record. She won the VHSL 5A Outdoor Pole Vault Championship in both 2018 and 2017. She was a 5A Indoor Pole Vault State Champion while setting a new state record. She was also VHSL State Champion in Indoor Pole Vault in 2018, and a bronze medalist in 2017. She also won a Silver Athletics Team State Championships, and a Silver Medal in 2015 for Varsity Cheerleading Team State Championships. And, I'm tired, are you- And a track meet across the United States, has been named both Indoor- And, whereas Jennifer Harada is an outstanding student, finishing high school with a 4.7 grade point average, ranking ninth in her class of 474, and is a 2018 College Board AP Scholars with honors. She got a five on her AP Chemistry. Oh, isn't that right? Wow, that's impressive. Including National Honor Society, and performed many hours of community service with the Learn and Serve Club, the YMCA, Empowerhouse, and other community organizations. And whereas Jennifer received NCAA scholarship offers, from the University of Virginia, Virginia Tech, the University of Arkansas, and the University of South Dakota. She has selected the University of South Dakota, where she plans to double major in chemistry and criminal justice, and continue her vaulting career on the Division One level. Now therefore, Stafford County Board of Supervisors, on this the second day of July 2019, that it be and hereby does recognize and honor Jennifer Harada for her exemplary high school athletic and academic record, and a representation of Stafford County locally, regionally, statewide, and nationally. Wow, congratulations. And I was wondering if you would like to say a few words?
Hi, everyone, thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to thank a few people. Firstly, my parents for making everything possible, and taking me to all the practices I needed to be at, and then, everybody at Stafford High School for always being so supportive, and helping me through my four years there. And thank you, Ms. Bomke, for making this possible, I really appreciate it.
As you can tell by looking at me, I never pole vaulted. I would break the pole, bend the bar, and I'd probably hurt myself in the, in the meantime. But I just wanna say that, with Jen, not only is she an athlete, and not only is she a scholar, she is a good person. And sometimes, you get one or the other, sometimes two out of the three. But the same really can be said about this baseball team, as well as Jen, that they are class acts, and they come from good parents, and they come from good coaches. So congratulations.
At this time, Ms. Bomke's gonna stay on the diocese, because we're gonna recognize Stafford High School's baseball team as state champions, I think it's a first for them. This means a great deal to me, I'm a graduate of Stafford High School, not the school you're in, not the school building that was there before. When I graduated from Stafford High School in 1965, it was in the building where Drew Middle School is, and we all rode the Big Banana, there was no such thing as driving to school. But anyway, we're very proud of you, and I'd ask all you guys to please come up, coaches and players, and Ms. Bomke has a presentation for you. And she says she's only gonna take two hours, so.
Thank you so much for being here tonight, another fun evening. This is the first state championship in Stafford County in baseball, the first ever. Isn't that correct? Okay. They know. That's awesome. So, I just wanted to start with saying that it's actually been 10 years ago that I met Coach Tommy Harrison. Could you raise your hand, please? And he has run a great program all these years for Stafford County. And it's not just about the athletes, it's about the stu- And, and I've- I don't know, you guys probably wouldn't have remembered him, but I remember Anthony Romanello said, "What I love about you is he made my son a man, because of the accountability that Tommy Harrison sets forth with you gentlemen." And I remember, under Coach Harrison, the very first year, uh-oh, he just folded his That is correct. And so, I never scrubbed a single of those pants, they did it for the next four years. So anyway, Tommy Harrison has instilled in a lot of you, and I, I know that you're, I see you shaking your heads and smiling, and it wa- It's the ba- Three. Who was on first and second? Are they here? They're not here, okay. And then Tucker Sullivan was up bat, is that right? Okay, is he here? Okay. Just really darn exciting. So, congra- to all of you. I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then, Mr. Tolson, I believe you're gonna say a few words, and then Coach Harrison and Mr. Lewis, if he would like. Whereas the Stafford High School baseball team won the Class V Virginia High School League State Championship for the 2018-19. And whereas, this is the first state championship won by any Stafford County high school baseball team. And whereas, the team won the Commonwealth District Regular Season Title, the Commonwealth District Tournament Title, the Region 5D Championship, before winning the Class V State Championship, finishing with a 24-3 record. And whereas, team members include Jimmy Baker, Robbie Baker, Gunther Brandl, Hunter Utzler, Jake Flynn, Grant Foley, Henry, Kaz Jordan, Elijah Lambros, Caleb McAllister, Tristan McAllister, Dawson McCoy, Eric Ramali, Logan Stargower, Joe- Mike Tolson, Sam Wheeler, and whereas, team members Elijah Lambros, Caleb McAllister, and Mike Tolson were named First Team All-Region, and were also named to the All-State Team, with Mike Tolson being named Player of the Year for Class V. And whereas, team members Elijah Lambros, Caleb McAllister, Tucker Sullivan, and Mike Tolson were named All-Area by the Freelance Star, with Mike Tolson being named Player of the Year by the Freelance Star. And whereas, is Tommy Harrison, and assistant coaches are Scott Coleman, Matt Bomke, Chris Clifford, and Mike Hill, and whereas, was named Coach of the Year in the state for Class V, and Coach of the Year for the Freelance Star. Now therefore, County Board of Supervisors, on this the second day of July 2019, that it be and hereby does recognize and honor the Stafford High School baseball team on winning Stafford County's first-ever state championship in baseball. Congratulations, let me take that. So, Mike Tolson has a few words that he'd like to share?
I would just like to say, my brothers right here, my teammates that I've grinded with for the four years, that this is the best feeling I've ever had all my four years of my life, winning a state title with the best coaching staff I've ever had. There's no, no other group of people I'd rather go as far as I can with, and wake up early in the mornings, in the wintertime, 5:30, and dive on a gym floor with shorts Couple guys, Caleb McAllister, he started off kinda a little slow, but throughout the tournament, and throughout the whole season, he really picked it up and became one of our best hitters. He really clutched up a lot of the games, he really fought and battled, and I couldn't be more proud of him. He really fought and battled, and I couldn't be more proud of him. Robbie Baker, one of our pitchers that also kind of started a little slow, had picked it up a lot more as he went on. I couldn't have been proud of him for pitching in the state game, and there's no one else I'd rather have. Tucker Sullivan, our closer, he's always just gone in and done his job. I never seen him be nervous at all, even though he's not really a senior, he's still a junior. But I'm very proud of him, and I can't wait to see him next year just be a complete All-Star. Elijah, being a sophomore, he's still got a lot of room to grow, but he's taken the role as our number one in the lineup. He's done a lot. He's really stuck up a lot, and I'm very proud of him. I've learned a lot of lessons from my coaches, whether it be accountability, like you've mentioned, keeping our noses clean in the classroom, doing what we need to take care of when no one's looking, that really builds a lot of character. And being with Coach Harrison and Coach Coleman and Coach Bomke, they've been one of the greatest role models I've had besides my parents for the past four years, and I wouldn't rather spend it with anybody else. And I'm glad this could be my last year of high school before going off to college. Thank you.
I don't have anything written, but, and I'm probably more nervous than these guys standing up here. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors. Thanks for Joe hiring me 10 years ago. Dedication, discipline, and perseverance. Just a great ending to a great season. Couldn't ask for a better group. It's been a long year. Like Mike said, it's 5:00 AM workouts, that's not a lie. When I took this program over 10 years ago, I had a vision, and these kids lived it. And they get to reap the benefits of that dedication. Those 5:00 AM workouts, Coach Harrison getting on them all the time. We've had a real big supporting cast, from the parents to the principals to the community. As you win games, more people come out to watch, and the excitement and electricity that we had in the state finals was pretty incredible. You know, there was probably 3,500 people there. You didn't see it until we give up a home run, but, but that's a true statement. They never give up. We played in a lot of close games this year. I think that prepared these kids to perform like it was just another game. They wasn't nervous. I think me and Coach Coleman and Coach Bomke were more nervous than them. But we lead by example. We do our homework. We do scouting reports. I know a lot of people across the state that I've come across in my years of coaching, and I got a lot of help. And it was a true team effort. I couldn't be more happier for these guys and my staff and the parents. Thank you.
I already talked a little bit about the class and the character of these young men and Jen. But, you know, as a principal, you know, I see them as my kids. This is my team, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to stand up here with you guys and the coaches. Thank you, Ms. Bomke.
Thank you. Thanks again. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Appreciate it. You can hang that up in the school. Aww.
Give him a kiss on the cheek.
No, I'm not doing that. You'll kill me later. Thank you. Thanks, guys, for coming. And you guys can hang that up in the school. Great comments.
Next, we're going to have presentations by the public. I don't have any speaker cards, is that correct? You are allowed to come up and speak on any subject you would like unless it's part of the tonight's public hearing. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address. Unless you are a student, state your name only. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have about a minute. And when the red light comes on, it's time to wrap up your comments. And I'll give the group just a couple minutes to clear the building. As I have no speaker cards, I will begin on the right. Anyone on my right wishing to address the board on any subject? Seeing none, anyone on my left?
My name is David Sousa. I'm not going to say my address, even though I can. Good evening, members of the board. I read online today that a Publix is going to be built off the Courthouse Road widening by Embry Mill and the new Embry Mill Town Center. I live in the neighboring Austin Ridge, walkable distance from the spot. I will abstain from commenting on the environmental effects as well as building a business in residential area. What I would like to say is this, is we have construction going up and down the street as is. The stores should be completed by 2021, and do we really want the hassle of additional traffic on a road under construction? The traffic in the Colonial Forge area of the road is bad enough. Even when the road gets widened, we're throwing all this traffic into an area right next to the I-95 exit. Now, I understand that a business center is far better than another neighborhood and probably fits our comprehensive plan goals more so than another developed neighborhood, yet completion by 2021. In my opinion, we should be waiting until later in the decade. On that matter, I am imposed entirely to the town center's construction. If any reversible action is still possible, I strongly recommend the board consider undertaking it. At least wait an extra five years to allow the infrastructure to catch up, because the biggest problem in this county is the gap between development and infrastructure. And I encourage the board to reconsider adding this to the list if possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left or anyone else in the room?
Man, I should put it over this, but I'll leave it here. Paul Wodowski, the lifelong student, but I'll give you my address. Eight Pickett Lane, 125 days till Election Day. And let me begin by, first day of school is now August 12th. So we took away the summer, and I'd like to know how many school buses have air conditioning? Also, I brought notes because in case the screen goes blank, I've got a, I don't have a single point of failure. I brought, but let me give you that to you in acres. It's .02812213 acres. And for those of you who don't know what an acre is, it's real easy to remember. It's 66 feet by 660 feet. And three acres is 130,680 square feet. So every time someone buys a house in this county, I just want to make it aware to you. But remember, if you go back and watch this later in the week, you're going to see my favorite word is used in reports called issues. There are no issues. You're elected for four years. I'll give you the number of days that you're in office. You have opportunities to make a difference or do the no-term limits, except us as voters, that's the only way we could get you out of office. Too bad the, but I already informed them, there's 23 ways to get the first base. I brought that up to them at the school board meeting. And I think the Commonwealth should adopt Marshall Dillon Law. And then we'd have Miss Kitty, and heck, man, I could get Toby Keith, you know, he went to, he's from Oklahoma. He's going to support me in giving one of those academic and sports scholarships after I win the election in 125 days, which is also the beginning of the lame duck session. And I went back today because I heard about TDRs, and I've been studying TDRs ever since the crow's nest aspect came up. And I found out that the developers, the tip of investors, they never see the land until they're ready to develop, and then they realize, oh, my gosh, I can't develop on this land unless I grease some pockets of politicians. Let me give you something from a report card about administration. TDR is one of the most difficult land management techniques to establish. Administration of TDR programs is complex and costly, and maintaining a market may be difficult.
Anyone else in the chamber here to speak? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. That's the end of public presentations. Item number 21, Public Works, Consider the Condemnation Exercise of the County's Quick-Take Powers to Acquire Permanent Water Sanitary Sewer Easement on Tax Map Parcel NO21L-6-M. Mr. Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The item tonight in front of you is to consider exercising the county's quick-take powers for the acquisition of a sewer easement necessary for the operation of the new Moncur Elementary School. This quick-taker condemnation item is considered what they call a friendly condemnation. The bylaws of the Perry Farm HOA require a very lengthy process to go through the easement acquisition or the easement conveyance process. They recognize this, it's uncontested, but yet the schedule requires us to acquire this easement in order to get the school to an operation, operating fashion when it comes to water and sewer. So there's two exhibits in your packet. The colored one is the general location of the easement on the HOA's property, and the second one is the formal plat exhibit that's used for the instrument for the recordation of the easement. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Counsel? Thank you, sir. This time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak for or against? Same rules apply. Three minutes after you state your name and address. Anyone in the chamber want to speak for or against?
Paul Wodowski, Eight Pickett Lane, owner of 200 Chesterfield Lane, number 301. Quick-take powers, huh? Well, we all know HOAs are houses of aristocrats, and once again, if you remember, Moncur Elementary School was to be condemned, and now it's brought back to life. And now we're all worried about, is it going to come back to be open on August 12th, 2019? It'll be very interesting to see how fast your quick-take powers are, and maybe this is the way for me to get a county water and sewer bill by using quick-take powers.
Anyone else in the room would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Close the public hearing. This is Mr. Cavalier's district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for Resolution R-19-153.
I have a motion by Mr. Cavalier, a second by Mr. Dudenhyer for any discussion. Seeing none, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion carries six to nothing with one absent. That will conclude our meeting. Just remind the public that our next meeting, we're on summer break, and our next meeting will be on August 20th. Have a great summer.